Good morning, we'll call a meeting in order for the day. And first item on our agenda is to approve today's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion on the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Citizens who would like to be heard on any item, none on the agenda, seeing none, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion on the second to approve payment of bills and vouchers, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Brian, 2016 budget process.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and other commissioners. I won't spend very much time on this. What you're going to start today is the presentations from the different departments in regards to the budget. You have a printout of the budget as it is right now. Lori and I have started meeting with the different departments and we're going through things just to try to assure accuracy and frankly, we've been going the wrong way with every budget, it seems like. They've been added a few things here and there. I think with the exception of the sheriff's budget and the jail and all, they were just spot on, really accurate. They have some requests they want to talk to you about though. We have not made any adjustments in this yet for public health and if you remember right, they had quite a, they had a change in how they were reimbursed some services last year, so that's going to be a decent one. We don't have anything in here for dividends from MCI-T. We don't expect a great deal this year because they've lowered the premium, so we'll see what that is. We have not heard, we have not received information on our county program aid, so that just shows what it was last year. So there's just lots of variables yet, so possibly, certainly, you can do what you want with it, I guess, but when the departments are coming to us, hopefully you'll just take the information and we'll look at how it all fits together later on. So that's about all I have to start this off this morning, Mr. Chair.
Questions for Brian?
Not yet, but there will be.
After I read this is afternoon, I'll come up with some questions.
Okay, thanks Brian. Next, 2016 budget review, Sheriff.
And their document starts on about page thirty-three if you want on the budget document. Then there's a narrative that's attached to there too, you can look at later on, I guess.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I think I'll kick things off here and then have Julie talk about the jail and Brian talk about emergency management. Go ahead. So on page thirty-three, going through the revenue, just a few highlights. The police relief aid that was increased by about thirty-two or thirty-three thousand dollars, just under. That's a complicated state formula, that's vague and confusing. It's a pattern of increasing every year, so we've increased that a little bit. You'll see that impound fees have been increased by seventeen thousand dollars as well. That is, that basically washed out because the expenses for impound fees has also increased seventeen thousand dollars. That's as a result, we had, we used to pay by checkbook, all of our impound fees, that wasn't a very good way of doing that, so we've worked with Lori in the auditor's office and now that's ran through the budget. So it's more, a lot more efficient and a better tracking, so.
You said increased by seventeen thousand?
Yeah.
I mean, but it's more efficient.
Both revenue is increased by seventeen and expend, it's seventeen. It's money going in and coming out. So when somebody's vehicle gets impounded and the toll is a hundred dollars, we end up paying the tow company a hundred dollars, but then again, we receive a hundred dollars from a subject to other vehicle impounded.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It always looks alarming when it's a two-hundred-and-eighty-three percent increase.
Right. So no monetary changes there, you know, the bottom line, it's just we had, instead of having a checkbook through Belson Bank, now we're using the auditor's office. A substantial increase you're going to see is on miscellaneous refunds by a little over fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's the SRO position that will be starting this September for DGF schools. They've agreed to pay for a hundred-and-eighty school days, so they're paying for that deputy for nine months of the year. So that's that increase there. And as well in that account is our SRO for Holly and Ullin School Districts. So we're excited to get that program started in September, I know the school is as well. A decreased pistol permits a little bit, those seem to have leveled off barring any national incident again. We really peaked last year and again, I think they've leveled off a little bit, so our pistol permits hopefully should remain constant, about that level. Any questions on the revenue?
Do they have to renew that, or is that a one-time deal?
For pistol permit? Every five years?
Every five years.
Okay, moving on to expenses, I'll just talk about the accounts that we've increased a little bit. That being other professional services, we've seen a marked increase. When our population increases, obviously there's other services that we provide that will increase. Most of that increase is a result of our sexual assault exams by state statute, the sheriff's office is responsible for all sexual assault exams. Not only are we seeing more exams, but the price of an exam is expensive, has gone up a little bit. In addition, we can't control when they go into a clinic setting versus an ER setting. We've had a lot more people going to an ER setting and reporting it at one o'clock in the morning and obviously, as we all know, going to an ER visit is much more expensive than a clinic, so. So I've increased that a little bit. Equipment repair and maintenance, most of that increase is due to e-citations is mandatory, will be mandatory next July for everybody in the state of Minnesota. We've been working with this contract for many years, probably five years. They have, it's been difficult to deal with at best, so I've held back paying that eight-thousand-dollar maintenance for many years. Now they finally delivered a somewhat workable product, so last year I started paying that eight-thousand-dollar maintenance, so we've, we'll be expecting that every year. Because that is a state mandate next July, the other cities will be responsible to share that cost as well because those who want to participate still work with them.
Kenny's got a question.
Could you clarify for me what that e-citation is?
E-citation, instead of writing a paper ticket, now it's all done on a computer.
Okay.
And then it's printed out, a printed version.
Okay.
So slowly, like any state, the state is catching up on electronic, they have now mandated that all tickets will be electronic.
Thanks.
Yep. The next moving down, auto repair and maintenance, that was increased five thousand dollars. A lot of that has to do with, all of our staff are now trained in PIT, that pursuit intervention technique. Just tapping a bumper, we're looking at two thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. We have started a new business practice though, anytime when our office is involved in a pursuit or a PIT, we seek restitution with the defendant through court automatically. However, sometimes it takes several years for us to see that money, but we're at least asking for it and if they're convicted and we get restitution, we'll end up getting reimbursed for that. I've already discussed the impound lot, so if there's no questions on the increases and expenditures, I'll move on to the new request.
Any questions?
I think most of you attended the presentation by Chief Todd at Fartopiti with the Street Crimes Unit. We were anxious, excited, and had a lot of questions about our participation. We understood there was a need, but we really wanted to get our hands dirty before we made a decision. We have a deputy that's been assigned to that now for two months, the sheriff and I, and Lieutenant Todd met with him a week ago or so, and it's evident that there's a problem that our participation in that team is very well received and needed. There was an incident July seventh here in town. If there wasn't for our participation in that team, those, that unit would not have been working here. They're spending a lot of time on this side of the river now because as they projected what the, the attention that they've been receiving on the North Dakota side, a lot of those people have moved over here, so. We believe it's an important thing to do, we really want to continue our participation in it. I'm sure if Morehead, I know they've talked about it for a long time, I don't know what their plans are, but it's obvious it's needed and that's a new request. So you're going to see it's broken down into salary, and I lumped all of the equipment together just for ease of looking at it, to fifty-five thousand, five hundred. That is, including a vehicle and all the equipment, excuse me, uniforms, et cetera. That is a one-time startup cost. We anticipate under ten thousand dollars a year for recurring costs, that's, and mainly that's vehicle replacement through the Internal Service Fund and the other expensive equipment that's in the Internal Service Fund.
Do you have any excess funds that you could use right now to, for the purchase of the equipment?
More than likely, we do.
As a possibility rather than, than just putting it all into the levy?
Right. We, I believe we do, I don't think we're using any of that for the armor system, any of that vehicle stuff, so we made the vehicle, we wouldn't, oh yeah, we would, there's a possibility.
There is, yeah. There'd be money on that, especially the internal service on the vehicles.
Okay.
And we have done that the last two times with that SRO, we funded all that equipment through the Internal Service Fund.
Well, I certainly, I certainly am going to be supporting the request for that position. I think that's critical for Clay County to have that position, but I'm just wondering on the equipment side, because it's a one-time deal, if we couldn't, you know, save that from the levy and come up with that through your current Internal Service Funds that you have. I mean, that's something we'll look at as the budget process goes on, but.
Well, I can report back, I'm fairly confident we can. I'll have Lori run the list.
We've been in the negative at the end of the year generally, but we haven't done this correctly.
So, I would ask though, in preparation for this, understanding it's through the budget process, the time to start one of these, just to start any employee so long, I would at least like to start the selection process this year so that January first, we can hit the ground running because then we have training after that for three, four months, so we'd like to get this person involved, especially since we're going to be removing the deputy we have assigned there starting September first.
Okay, that was my question, okay.
Because he's attending, he is our SRO for DGF, so he's going to be gone.
So, will you come back to us with your timeframe, or do you know that now?
Well.
What's the process to hire somebody, get them ready and?
Well, it's about two months for selection, from the time we post it to the time you do testing, selection interviews, that's about two months, and then it's three and a half months of training.
So in the meantime, starting September one, we won't have anybody available?
Correct.
From the Minnesota side at all to work on?
Correct.
I don't think I like that.
I'd be happy to come back and put a proposal together to start it early, but again, it's outside the budget process. There's, there's some other things I could do to find some money through forfeitures.
Well, this is, this is a thing that's, I think, important to our entire county community, and it's unfortunate that we didn't see it, we didn't know about it, and didn't know the extent of the problem until mid-year, so we couldn't budget for it.
Correct.
But that does not take away our responsibility to still solve the problem, help solve the problem, so.
But I mean, the reality of it right now is, is that if you start, you're not, even if you started a little earlier than you planned on, you're not going to be able to hire anybody till probably November anyway, so.
But that's the point though, I guess, I don't think we should be waiting.
Well, but you're, you're going to request to start the process so you can have somebody in place by January first.
Right.
And the early, I mean, even if, even if you move that up, we're talking a month or two, you know, if we do it earlier, so.
Yeah, it's roughly, I think you could, for, you can say it's a five-month process from, from selection, training, to training that new person.
So I think, I think, I kind of agree with Kevin that you should maybe, you know, come back to us, we can, maybe the sooner we get this started, the better.
Okay.
Because the impact on the budget for the rest of this year probably isn't going to be that significant anyway, so.
Okay, I'll do that.
That may help you at least get somebody training sooner and have them, you know, have your deputy available, a month or two, I suppose, everything helps, so.
Okay. All right, any more questions on that? Okay, I'm going to have Brian talk a little bit about armor when it's his turn to talk about his budget. I did make a little note that will have no significant impact on the budget, that's all Internal Service Funds or grants that will, that will cover the cost of that project. I will touch briefly on the dispatch portion, and that would be on your page thirty-nine. So as you remember, we have a new memorandum of understanding with those four cities, Barnesville, Dilworth, Blandon, and Holly, that takes effect this January with a three-year phase-in period. We, we have received two signed MOUs back from the cities of Dilworth and Blandon. I believe Barnesville will sign the memorandum of understanding as well, they've always been a supporter of it. However, I'm not sure what Holly's position is, I believe they requested a meeting with the county administrator to discuss it further. But that, that information and that agreement has been inputted in the budget and there is a slight increase for reimbursement by those four cities, and you will see that again for the next two years and we'll, then they'll be fully funding their portion of dispatch. Okay, there's no further questions, I'm sure Julie's.
Any questions for Matt?
Anxious to talk about her.
Just anxious.
Thanks, thanks, Matt.
Okay, we'll start with our revenue. We all see a decrease in our revenue from our huber payments, which is our workers, inmates who go out into the community and do the regular jobs. We have less inmates qualifying for that program, so we're receiving less payments for that. So I do foresee that we'll have a significant drop in revenue of approximately twenty-three, twenty-three thousand dollars. As far as the rest of the revenue, it should be right on track, should be no real changes there. Anybody have any questions about our revenue comes?
Questions for Julie?
Okay, then we'll just move on to my expenditures. We have some increases in our salaries, sentence of service, health insurance, and then the big changes for the jail will be a count two fifty-six, two nine-seven, which is prisoner board, and that's our people we ship out of county. When I did our budget, I based it on the last eight months and we were averaging thirty-one inmates, thirty-one point three inmates out of county, so that's what I predicted for 2016. In reality, the first six months of 2015, we've actually averaged, averaged thirty-three inmates out.
How many?
Thirty-three, which is even higher, and for the last three weeks, we've averaged over forty. Right now we're forty-five, we've been averaging over forty-two. So I'm still hoping that we, our numbers will drop a little bit to make it in for the budget I'm requesting. In 2015, we will be over. So basically, what I figured for out of county costs is thirty-one inmates out at about fifty-two dollars a day. I came up with the fifty-two dollars a day based on the fact that we currently have a contract with Tri-County Community Corrections, which is in Crookston. They currently charge us approximately forty-eight dollars a bed. Unfortunately, they cannot keep all of our inmates because they don't have enough space, so we are also housing in Douglas County, which is Alexandria, and Wilken County, which is in Breckenridge. Those two places charge anywhere from fifty to fifty-five dollars a day, so average cost would be about fifty-two dollars a day.
So your increase of two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand is based on thirty-one prisoners and?
Thirty-one point three.
So it could be.
It could be worse.
Could be worse.
It could be worse.
So we're looking at a, basically a quarter million dollar increase over last year, probably won't be enough, which just highlights how desperate we need this new jail, the sooner the better, so.
The other expenditure we have is, after speaking with Georgia, we decided that the jail should be purchasing its own custodial supplies since everybody else in the county pretty much is on their own. So this is basically just a transfer from her accounts into my accounts, so it should pretty much be a wash. And then lastly is my new request, I am requesting an additional full-time correction officer to help with the overcrowding issue we have at the jail. This would be like a powership, we want on Monday through Friday to help accommodate. We do all our transports for overcrowding during the week, during the daytime hours. It's becoming increasingly difficult for our staff to get the regular jail job duties done, rounds are being missed. We're processing in probably twelve to fifteen additional inmates in four times a week due to overcrowding and keeping everybody where they're supposed to be. I'm only actually asking for half the money because I feel that I have, in my budget, a half-time position, which is not currently being filled, that I could use that money to contribute to the full-time position, so that's why it's only forty-two thousand. And in fact, I will be coming to the board in the next couple of weeks to ask if we can go ahead and get this position hired now instead of in 2016. I do feel that I have the money in my budget to go ahead and do that. We've had some employees leave and there's a significant savings in my, my full-time salaries that would cover this person, so don't be surprised if you don't see me even possibly next week to ask for this assistance.
We won't be surprised.
We won't be surprised. We really could use additional staff to manage this, the booking and releasing of these inmates, it's getting a little overwhelming out there for us.
Can I, going back up to the increase in your expenditures, the, the thirty-nine thousand that you have for health insurance, what rate are we using Lori for that, for projected?
The current, current year rate. So I don't know what the, what the amount is.
Oh, so this, so this doesn't include any potential increase in health insurance costs?
No. Well, I've got a lump sum of five-hundred thousand dollars in the general revenue fund to cover any increases.
Okay, but it's not, it's not broken into departments yet?
No.
Okay.
But we don't know that specific amount yet, right?
Yeah, that's why we haven't broken it up.
But Lori, that.
Because it could be over five-hundred.
It could be.
Yeah, but that, so that five-hundred is, what, what percentage is that of the total health insurance? What percentage increase is that?
What did we figure, was that about thirteen?
Yeah, thirteen to fifteen percent, somewhere near. And Mr. Chair and Mr. Campbell, yeah, this thirty-six thousand is 2015's increase over 2014, but she's just reflecting it, that that was an increase in the budget. Then there will be an additional insurance cost that goes in that she has already placed in the budget.
Well, are you proposing increases for sixteen? Is what this is?
Well, it is, but it's, it's the fixed cost that went up from the budget, from 2014 to 2015, so. That was a little confusing, I think.
Without any percentage increases in here?
Yeah.
Okay, I just needed that clarification.
Some additional requests I'm asking for is, has to do with training. I would like to send my staff to crisis intervention training, which helps them deal with mental health issues for inmates in the jail, maybe if they were in crisis mode. We've had this training in the past, it's very expensive, but what I'd like to do is start sending three officers every year and cycle them through so they're continually getting this, this training.
What page is your?
I'm sorry.
Thirty-eight.
Yep, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight or thirty-nine, one of the.
Thirty-nine's dispatch.
So we're on training. Six-two-seven-seven.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still, I'm still stuck back on this prisoner board thing.
Yeah, that's pretty overwhelming, but.
But, but I guess what I'm, what I'm saying here is, so if we can, Mr. Chairman, if we can just go back to that for a second, because you, you made a comment that I think needs to really be emphasized here. So we have the prisoner board out of county is five ninety-four. Is, that's the proposed for 2016.
Correct.
Is there, is there any other line item besides that that's associated with that on here?
That's strictly the boarding of inmates out, so it doesn't.
So it's a prisoner care or prisoner, there's prisoner board of a hundred-and-eighty, what's that?
That's food.
That's the food for the people we're shipping out?
That's the food for people who are staying in the jail.
Oh, okay, okay. And the prisoner care is for?
That covers everybody, including the ones we have out.
Okay, so, so a portion of that two-seventy-three really needs to, in terms of a total cost of our prisoners out, of course, that's going to happen anyway.
Mm-hmm.
My point being, you know, we could, we could potentially see a principal and interest on a, on a new jail of, if it's two million or two-point-five million, we've got, if it's two million, we've got one-fourth of that right now that is simply being paid to.
We're sending out of our county.
Yeah. So, so when we build this new jail, one-fourth of it, in terms of what we currently have to budget for that purpose, can go directly to our own facility. And I think that's really important, that we emphasize that to the public in this process, so.
And the other thing, under year-to-date, we've spent two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. We've actually spent more than that because the July bills and the June bills are not in that account, so it's closer to three-hundred.
I think five ninety-four is going to be, we're going to be lucky if we can keep it there.
Agreed.
Okay, I'm, thank you.
The last thing, has to do with the training, as I said, crisis intervention, along with that training, there's hotels and meals involved. Generally, this training is not offered locally, so we'd have to send people out, and it's usually a several-day program, so there'd be several nights in a hotel. That would be my last new request.
Okay, any questions for Julie on that? Thank you, Julie. Brian, are you up there?
Yep. My budget, they should stay the same as last year, really no changes. I did want to speak a little bit about the armor system. The plan was approved by the state of Minnesota, so we final, passed that final hurdle. Now we'll be going into the more detailed of how it's going to go and then apply for the grants this fall for the fire and EMS. Again, the armor system, that, the money that we have to pay for, I guess our part would be basically coming out of Internal Services, so there would be no expenses there. Same with the jail radios and sheriff's office. Any questions on that?
So we've been anticipating that, then, and putting money in the Internal Service Fund line items for that?
Correct.
Yes. Good. Any questions on the EM budget?
Thank you. Quick. It will be, as we just found out, it will be another good positive about switching to this armor system. We just had one of our towers disrupt the lightning, it was two-hundred-and-twenty-and-a-half thousand dollars, so when that stuff is state equipment, it kind of, hell.
Yeah, again, the equipment that we had up there, they, we could not repair that, so we had to put new equipment up there, but the insurance will cover, hopefully will cover this part of it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for these five people?
Did we cover the corner pages at all?
I certainly can, but I didn't really ask for any increases.
Okay, all right, no, that's fine. I just, I know it's, you can't estimate how much that would be here.
Yeah, I have it in here.
So in 2015, and I'm glad you asked that, in 2015, you have in parentheses, June?
That's how many to date, that's how many autopsies we've had to date.
Thirteen.
Twelve.
Okay, why do you have?
June thirteenth, that's the date.
Oh, that's the date.
That's the date I ran, ran the numbers, so.
So that's pretty close to half a year, so if there was any consistency, there's no consistency in.
Well, if you look at 2015, right.
In autopsies, but, you know. But in comparison to twelve and thirteen, you know, we're considerably down right now. I agree that we probably shouldn't be changing what you have in your budget for it.
Again, that, you know, just like sexual assault exams, as the population increases, you're going to see more of an increase in autopsies and exams and.
Didn't, I think this question was raised earlier, didn't, wasn't there some request amongst, or maybe it's the burials, maybe that's the burials I'm thinking of, but there's a request.
This legislator's session?
There was a request for increase, or there is going to be some increased cost with burials, Brian?
We were talking about that.
Yes. Okay, that's outside of, that's social services. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you're up next. Next item is to adopt a resolution approving Clay County Emergency Operation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead, what I kind of did is broke it down and just going to highlight if there was anything new in some of the plans. And I did give you a copy, do have a hard copy, I have it in Brian's office, and I think he'll probably give another copy, leave it there, so if you have any questions, you can go to that, or you just called me to. Yes, that's the one.
Mr. Chair, it's real interesting reading.
Yeah. Okay. The first annex, or the annex A is a notification warning. Basically, what I did is added the siren and the bardo fair. Also added the IPOS activation, the system that went to about a year ago. And annex B, which is the direction of control, I changed the USC activation levels to reflect more of the state level, is the level four, like monitoring, level three, the activation of command and general staff, and activation two will be full staff. And annex C, which is the public information officers, I updated that in 2013. Basically, I developed the job descriptions for whoever's going to be in that position, is going to know what they have to do and what's expected of them on PIO. Again, we have developed a far more PIO membership, so we got numerous peoples that are, their daily lives are PIOs, and then we'll come together if we have an emergency and we need them to, if we have to establish a joint information center. Annex D, search and rescue, basically just minor changes in there. Annex D, health and medical, updated minor changes. Annex F, evacuation and security, minor changes there. Annex F, GOP evacuation and security. I added the evacuation operation for search and rescue for the city morgue in rural Clay County, did that about two years ago. No, actually, goes back almost four years ago, I added that. Also added the Clay morgue relocation of a vulnerable population. This plan should be followed, re-locating from the original facility to up in the facility upon returns. Again, that comes from the '09 flood, basically was added to the plan. Added registration process for Clay County Public Health Vulnerable Adult Client Database. Again, at the, you can go online, you can register as a vulnerable adult, that was added to that plan. Fire protection, annex G, just minor updates, damage assessment, minor updates was annex H. Annex I, Congregate Care, minor updates added there. And annex one, annex I of the GOP, added a animal shelter, domestic animal plan, and added the mass shelter plan, which included all the cities in Clay County, included the city morgue. Again, the city morgue, we broke down by wards. Basically, that plan went from twenty pages to one-hundred-and-fifty-six. There's a lot of information in there, but it's everything outlined for each city. Debris removal was the next plan. I added to Clay County solid waste plan for location of debris, also was signed off by Kurt on the plan. Other things added to debris removal, basically how to separate, how you're going to separate your debris by different categories. Annex K, updated contact and pipeline location. Annex K, again, that's for utility, added first responder procedures and pipeline explosion or leak. Annex L was radiologists and hazard material, updated the list of names, updated morgue fire as the Minnesota Chemical Assessment Team. Annex M, long-term community recovery, I added that this year. That was something that the state requested to have in the emergency operation plan. Just kind of overall, how are we going to do things to get back on our feet after a disaster or after an emergency. Addendum A, which is the medical all-hazard response recovery plan, updated the population basically of Clay County and roles of incident command for the county officials. And we also, we did a all-hazard response recovery plan, basically it's a, it's a risk assessment. And I don't know if you guys have had this, but I have a copy for you, if you'd like a copy. Our risk assessment has not really changed in the last three, three to four years. Again, most risk that we have is straight line of wind, I'm sorry, is there tornado and chemical spill, basically that are tied for number one. Number two, or number three, then would be a flash flood, and then number four would be an ice snowstorm. So that's basically how we rated our hazards. And I don't foresee that changing anytime soon. It's going to be always the chemical spills and tornado is going to be probably our number one. We've kind of gotten out of the flooding business, hopefully, but still flash flood is still a possibility.
How about, we haven't seen any rail issues yet.
That, you know, that fault, that fall under the chemical spills or hazard material. Let's see, the addendum A, which is the public health emergency support function, just to add minor updates to that. Mortuary service was the addendum B. I sent that out to Dr. McGee's office, so random county MEs, he reviewed it and signed it and sent it back. Addendum D, terrorism, just minor updates, and addendum D, behavioral health, just minor changes. Mutual aid agreement was signed, renewed with red cross, in the west central region, healthcare preparedness coalition. Lot of words. Basically, the coalition that'll come in and help us when mental health during a disaster or after disaster. Addendum F, which is the foreign animal disease, basically updated the minor, minor changes there, and then addendum G, railroad emergency plan. Again, this was new back in 2013. I added this year a lot more information on Otter Tail River, Otter Tail Valley Railroad, decides to be an asset. So that's kind of a nutshell. Any questions?
I guess. I'm sorry, I was just out to the first part. Was there any, any changes made to the protocol during the disaster?
Uh, no, not really, no. Pretty much stays the same, no matter which way you look at it. It's just the future responsibilities, that's basically all the change.
Having been one of the people that got to go underneath the grandstand at the county fair when the alarms went off because of the tornado possibility, I want to thank you for that. I know that that was an addition that you talked about, so.
Was it loud?
Yes.
Very loud.
Yeah.
A week before, you know, again, it kind of highlights why we, you know, would test them every month, I think it was a week before. First monthly test, that siren did not go off. So we had to have somebody out there to take a look at it, and there were batteries in the pride, and there was a fuse missing, so I said, yeah, you need to get that done.
Yeah.
The fair is next week, so they did take care of it.
Good, thank you.
Wayne?
Brian, do you need a resolution on this?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Chair, I move resolution number 2015 dash twenty-two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Clay County Emergency Operation Plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Brian, do you have?
Not in regards to the, possibly after the vote, but Brian could just touch on the bird flu? That was really an important issue this last year, and Brian.
We probably could have caused it into foreign animal disease. I did, you know, at the beginning of this, I think I did send a message to Brian and some of the commissioner, probably get details on how we respond to this. And our plan basically fit what the state wanted and recommended to us. Of course, we actually did get a deposit in Clay County, and it turned out pretty well, even though we had to deal with a lot of federal government, USDA and stuff like that. It was kind of reversed of how we do it. Normally, it's the locals that are in charge, and then they state, federal come in and assist us. Well, there was the other way around, so a little bit different dealing with it. And I think that the farmer was very frustrated, didn't know about, about that. And they still really don't know how it was spread, how the disease was spread. They're thinking they might have another outbreak again this fall when the migration goes back again. There is a vaccine that they, they said that they will work for chickens, but they don't know yet for turkeys, but of course, the vaccine is not a hundred percent. I did speak to the farmer actually last week, and he, he is already to re-establish his flock, but he's opinion that he's probably not committed to it.
Oh, really?
He'll probably go to something else.
Okay, anything else for Brian?
No, Brian.
All in favor?
Use it for something else.
All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye? Or same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Looks like we might as well do some committee reports. Dave is next, so, Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tuesday, July twenty-first, local advisory council of adult mental health. General business, presentation by Jennifer Capo of Prairie St. John's. Her position involves being a liaison between Prairie and other agencies throughout the region. She went over many of the services provided by Prairie. Agency reports, consumer concerns, and we broke up into small discussion groups regarding employment concerns and opportunities for people who do have some mental concerns. Thursday, July twenty-third, Lakes and Prairies. Before the meeting, the finance committee met and went over the audit. The audit was excellent and all is well with Lakes and Prairies. For the meeting, general business, certain items needed consideration. One was to increase the head start budget due to increasing enrollment. Another regarded the bus garage lease, which will be in place throughout May of 2016, and at that time, Lakes and Prairies will have to find more space, will have to be found. And Jenny might have more to add to the meeting than I did. Then also implemented a new performance evaluation system for the employees. On Friday, July twenty-fourth, again for Lakes and Prairies, there was a conference call among the state auditor's office and Lakes and Prairies executive director, director, rather, financial person, and local director and me. And Lakes and Prairies had filled out documents for the state survey of Lakes and Prairies caps. Their questions included the following: allocation of fixed assets, costs, different executive workloads, controlled activities primarily to do with head start, and measures of security in all of the areas of Lakes and Prairies. The call went well, and they, the auditor's office, were very pleased with the responses they received. So, all right.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, Tuesday, we had our first meeting of the mental health group for the jail. I wonder, who should, who should be on the committee, should we add to the committee? Or do we have to write people on there and stuff like that? So we decided to add, there's a couple more people we decided to add on that. Also wonder, what is the goal of the, of the committee? What do we plan on, you know, accomplishing through this committee? You know, another important thing we looked at, you know, do we have the present staff? I mean, I think we found out that there is a serious mental health, I mean, that we need a mental health department or whatever. It's there, the problem is there. But do we have the staff to take care of it, you know, or do we have to hire more staff, you know? So those are things that we have to work on and stuff like that. So I think we came up with some good goals that we're going to be working on. Tuesday afternoon, MetroCock had an open house on audits that are performed on MetroCock and stuff like that, how the state becomes involved. Thursday, we had interviews for the full-time 4-H position in the U.S. Minnesota Extension Office. And we interviewed five candidates, and I don't think they have offered the position anybody yet that have where, but we did interview five people.
Thank you. Jenny?
I did have the mental health subcommittee for the jail, Frank covered it fairly well. One, one point is there are other counties that, in regards to staffing needs, have crisis teams that respond when there's a mental health situation. And so we're going to kind of look at how those other counties do it and see if maybe we could implement something here in the meantime. I had the planning commission Tuesday evening, we issued three permits, one for gravel pit, one for barn extension, and the yard waste recycling, the landfill was brought up. We did approve that, and I think there's some, some discussion as to how that, that may affect Holly Township. But I think overall, the best place to have something like that is definitely at the landfill. Wednesday, I participated in the joint facility tour out at Highway. So Southern Water is currently seeking some space to possibly move into December first or January first, and there's a possibility of them being a tenant out at the highway department. It was also really good to get members from City Moorhead, Clay County, and MinDOT together because they haven't evaluated how that space is allocated since it was built, I think in 2002. And while our commitment from the county financially won't go up, for instance, MinDOT may seek some more warm storage and a flip-flop for office space. So while I hope it works out for Southern Water, I think it'll be a good opportunity for them to continue to iron that out. I do want to say that, now that Dave just walked in, representative from MinDOT came up to me after that meeting on Wednesday and just wanted to praise you and your team for being such good people to work with. And he also did say that the sheriff's department and Sheriff Bill Burquist are amazing to work with, especially in the winter with road closures, that it's been nothing but ease. So I appreciate hearing that. I also had the 4-H extension interviews, and I'm really impressed with the pool of candidates that we were able to pull together, and I trust that a decision will be made to offer that position to the best candidate. Lakes and Prairies committee action, Wayne covered that fairly well. I don't have anything else to add. Yesterday, I had the Lakeland Mental Health Board at Glenwood, at the Polk County Courthouse. One thing that was worth noting is the Clay County facilities and programs continue to meet and exceed productivity standards, so I always appreciate hearing that. And board action was that we accepted two youth grants that will go specifically to send youth from Moorhead and DGF schools to camping opportunities. And that, I think, is the end.
Thanks.
Last Thursday, the twenty-third, we had a solid waste advisory committee meeting, and we got reports from, we basically had an annual report from Mike Hannan from the Prairie Lakes, he's Prairie Lakes director, on what's going on with. we basically had an annual report from Mike Hannan from the Prairie Lakes, he's Prairie Lakes Director, on what's going on with, um, the facility in front. Uh, we received our usual update from Larry Henry. Everything seems to be going fairly well at the, at the landfill. Julie talked about the household hazardous wastes and, and that, of course, is, uh, going strong and they're getting a lot of material in there, which is a good thing. Shannon talked about, um, recycling programs that are going on and, and, um, they continue to always be looking for new ways to, um, be getting out to the public of the importance of recycling. And then we did, uh, basically said goodbye to Beth Harries. She's the Minnesota Green Corps member that's been with us. She's actually, um, her, technically her last day is September one, but, um, anyway, we thanked her for her good work. And then on the twenty-fourth, I had a Prairie Lakes Budget Meeting in front. And, um, the proposed budget based on more realistic revenues, uh, really it ends up showing was with close to a one point one million dollar deficit in the budget. And, um, so we plugged away and plugged away and plugged away and, and part of the, um, process that was originally calculated would have been an increase in tipping fees. And so we looked at that and we looked at what had been the anticipated level of tipping fee increases from the time when they originally started that original feasibility of the, of the project. And they, um, the tipping fees are currently at eighty-four dollars and they haven't raised that. And this will be the third year that there was no raise in the tipping fees. And according to the feasibility study, that should have been significantly more by now. Uh, so one of the ways to potentially help with that will be to raise that tipping fee. Uh, that has not, it's gonna, it's going to be a proposal by our Budget Committee. But yet that has not gone, gone to the Prairie Lakes Board. And what that would mean to, um, a residential person in Clay County would, would be very, very minimal. Even if that thing went up ten cents, it would be very minimal to the average household user who has, you know, one point five ton per year, not tons per year, but just their normal usage, it wouldn't be much. And then yesterday, uh, we did have our, um, jail construction, uh, planning meeting. And, um, I'm, like, I'm really impressed with that entire committee. These, uh, and there's been a lot of work on that. Uh, we started off with over seventeen, we've gone through seventeen different proposed plans in this process. And, um, yesterday, we really got down to, uh, what we believe is a really good final schematic design of the jail portion of this project. The jail staff is really pleased with it. Uh, it condenses it in an area where, um, where the original law enforcement center can stay in operation for a little bit while that jail is being constructed. So we, we're not, we're not limited to our abilities there. And then it still then would allow, um, for future growth within the jail to go where the current LEC is. So, um, I think what's, I think we're planning a report by, uh, Klein McCarthy to come before this board on August eleventh. And at that same, on that same date, we are probably going to be, um, asking to move forward now with, um, a contract with Klein McCarthy to enter into the, you know, more, more of the design phase to really get this thing rolling. And, um, so you'll hear about that. And in addition to that, uh, we will probably be asking to also then maybe expand the, um, the, uh, the schematic process with the law enforcement center, which is still an important part of the entire project because at some point they're going to have to go hand in hand. That concludes my report.
That's it. Okay, I had that jail meeting and Kevin covered that well. Uh, I had a Veterans Advisory Committee meeting last week and we're planning, uh, a, uh, Veterans Conference again this year, the second one, which will be at the Armory on, uh, October, Friday, October second. And so that's shaping up nicely and there'll be a lot of good information for our area veterans. And that was it.
That's it, yeah.
I do, one thing that I neglected to say, I wasn't able to attend because I was at the Planning Commission, but I know the Buffalo Red Watershed had a meeting on Tuesday evening about, um, helping to fix ditch eleven in, uh, Eastern Washington Highway seventy-five. Uh, there was a culvert washout in March and there's some ditch slop in, in that. Because of that, I had some, uh, meetings with landowners as to how that maybe may not affect them. So I just wanted you to know that that was going on.
Thank you. Dave, come on up. Morning. Morning. Morning.
I, uh, passing around my updated goals for the Road and Bridges Highway Department. Fifty-four. Um, for the most part, there's not a lot of real changes. Uh, I mean, there's a few, but for the most part, uh, you know, we're going to continue to work with our capital improvements, uh, whether it be on our, our fleet, on our shops or our roads and bridges. Uh, we're going to continue to, um, maintain our, our bridges through our bridge inspections that we're required to do through the federal government. Uh, continue to do our, uh, five-year plan projects that we are, have on our list. Um, there's also, there's MPCA requirements with regard to storm waters. Uh, there's annual meetings and reports that we have to turn in there. Um, we're going to continue to make improvements to our fleet as equipment gets to the end of its life and make replacements there. We're going to continue to monitor and, and sell permits, whether it be for moving permits or harvest and, and agriculture type permits. Um, we're also utilizing some software, uh, that we manage our signs, manages our permit program. And I'm looking into kind of a fleet management software as well that would help our guys in the shop. Uh, right now, we're kind of use, or be just a file system or just their memory, I guess. And we had a replacement with our, our shop foreman retired and I think he has a lot of things upstairs that he took with him with some sort of a software, uh, program. It would be a little easier for him, a lot better tracking. Um, and as well as if we had a piece of equipment that was problematic, you know, we'd have records and instant access to how much time and money we are putting in there. We're also taking, uh, been working the last year pretty hard on maybe a joint shop in the Holly Rolag area. So we're going to continue our efforts, uh, going down that road to see if that's feasible and makes sense. Um, we, we always continue to work with township officials on issues, uh, road issues, bridge issues. Been working on some, uh, with Brian a little bit on some procedural manuals. Uh, a couple years ago, we had some, some turnover in our office staff. So, um, there again, rather than having someone there for twenty-seven years without a proper, uh, listing and, uh, you know, inventory of exactly what they do on a day-to-day basis throughout the year, uh, we put together a real nice procedural manual and we're going to continue to use that and grow that. Um, we're also doing the same thing in the shop area. So it's about halfway done or so, but we're going to continue to grow and have a shop procedural manual as well. So, um, the current staff that's there, um, may not be there for a very long lengthy amount of time. So I'd like to get that kind of put in place too. So down the road, uh, probably continue to do that for some other of our key supervisor positions as well. Uh, maintenance foreman would be another good area as well as, you know, county engineer and assistant engineer as well. So we're going to keep working on that and, uh, so far I like how it's turning out, so. Does everybody have a copy of my, the budget for Highway Department?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Not a lot has changed there. Um, for the most part, uh, I worked with the Auditor's Department and they updated the salaries, the health insurance, parents' social and some of those items. Uh, so they went up according to, I guess, the average throughout the county. On the first page, I guess, is, lays out maintenance. Um, most things remain fairly flat there. I did put a little extra money and it might be a change on your guys' page from what was originally printed out. Um, I took a look at our, our gravel and our repair labor for contract work on our roads. And, um, I guess I'd like to bump that up a little bit if I could get approval to do that. Last year, we budgeted eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for road materials and that is gravel, hot mix and items like that. I'd like to bump that up ten thousand dollars to eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. Our, our contract labor, it's called roadway maintenance costs, was at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. And I'd like to bump that up ten thousand as well. I just think that we got some areas out in the county that with a little more money, we could probably do a little bit more. So I, I guess I bumped those two up. Everything else stayed pretty much the same on the, on the maintenance subsection, I guess. Um, the next subsection is Highway Construction. And that is pretty much our engineering technicians and the work that we do, uh, in-house, uh, projects being bid out. Some of the bigger line items there are the appraisal work, about halfway down. Um, that one there stayed about the same. We are going to have some appraisal costs, but I think we're probably going to split those out, being that we're going to be doing this work this fall. Some of that work will be done in fifteen, some done in sixteen. So combined between, uh, this year's and last year's budget, we're hoping to take care of that. Engineering, consulting and technical services, that's what we do on, if we need to, uh, have like bridge designs and things like that. Uh, we don't have a lot of area there. You can see that one reduced from eighty-seven thousand five hundred last year to forty thousand this year. Uh, we will need some assistance probably on a project in Glendon. And I don't think a lot of that work will be done in sixteen, uh, but we do have a couple of bridges that we may need. Um, anytime we do any, uh, any, any paving work or any testing work, some of that comes out of there as well. Some certain things need to go to MinDOT, uh, the fabric, uh, that goes underneath the gravel and that, some of those separation fabrics. All that stuff needs to be tested and that's where it comes out of this line item here. Probably the biggest change, though, we're going to see is in right-of-way. Uh, in two thousand fifteen, we did all paving, so we didn't need any right-of-way this year. Uh, but next year with County Road ninety-five being, uh, on the design and construction, um, it's five miles and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be expensive. So that one, correct, yeah, it'd be widened and, uh, there's a lot of farm sites along there and agriculture land. So, um, Nathan and I put together our best estimate, real similar to what we did on County Road eighteen, being about the same length and that. So that's why that one's up to a hundred and seventy thousand. Other than that, we have not increased the, uh, the new county construction funding, which is our, our dollars for constructing on county roads. So that remains the same at three hundred and fifty thousand. And then the other, the other numbers, I guess, are just numbers in, numbers out, whether it's gas tax dollars or wheelage dollars, so.
Jenny, go ahead.
I just have a quick question going back to your, um, the maintenance costs. Will that cost increase cover additional costs and materials or will that go to what the inflationary costs are? I mean, because you had mentioned hot mix too, right, didn't you?
Correct, yep.
It's not just gravel?
Yep. I'd say it's probably a little bit combination of both. It'll give us a little more purchasing power, but, uh, correct, it's also the, uh, if it remains flat, we probably go backwards a little bit.
Right. I mean, I, I understand we do need more materials, but I was also just, I know it's inflating as well.
Yeah, yeah, so we won't quite get ten thousand dollars worth of purchasing, but, um.
Kevin?
Dave, uh, on the right-of-way, um, cost, so we don't, do, do we incorporate those right-of-way costs into our cost projections in our five-year plan?
Um, I don't believe so. I think our five-year plan is pretty much just, I guess it's always, you know, we, we can do that, that's a good question. I think as of now, though, it's only construction dollars.
Cause it, you know, it is, it is, you know, I'm just thinking it is part of the project.
True, true.
So I'm just wondering if, if we wouldn't be better off in the future to incorporate that for the years that we're planning those projects?
Sure.
So that we know that it's there, uh, during the five-year plan process?
True.
Obviously, we try to balance that with the revenues.
Exactly, yeah.
But at the same point, that doesn't mean that we, we may not have to in those given years to plan to increase the county portion of that budget.
Sure.
That purpose. But I, it seems to me that's, that's a direct relation to an individual project, which I think should be part of the five-year plan.
Yep, we can bring that back to Highway Committee. Uh, like Commissioner Campbell said, on the top part of our five-year construction plan, we show revenues and it's in the area of regular construction, uh, municipal state aid construction and then wheelage tax and then county funds. So there's kind of four columns of revenue and then there's about four or five different columns of expenditures, whether it's on the state aid highway, county road, uh, town, or the bridge projects.
But I think, you know, my point is, is, is it's really a true cost of that project, so we should incorporate into that project.
Sure.
Costs for.
Yep.
It's, we're, it's not going to change how we have to get the money.
True.
It's just that how we plan.
Yep.
And that we plan the project for its true cost.
Most of our projects for the next five years are bridge replacements, so it should be no right-of-way.
Correct, yeah, those are very, very minimal.
I mean, but it's a good point. I mean, we have to incorporate it in, uh, like I said, the next five years, it looks like, other than the, the Glendon, I mean, other, it's mostly bridge replacements.
Yep, and it would mainly be just our grading projects, any grading project needs right-of-way.
And then I had one other question too. And, and this is something that, uh, with the, with the actions that were taken by the, um, legislature and the bonding, uh, as we know, the, the, the final phase of the Oakport flood project is, is now, um, going to be funded. And, and the additional good news for Clay County is our County Road one from County Road twenty-two up to County Road ninety-three is going to be rebuilt, um, based with, using those dollars. So it's a really, that's a, another good savings for Clay County in addition to the flood protection for those residents in Oakport. But my question to you is, Dave, now that, now that this is a done deal, do you see anything else that the county may need to be planning for that might be right along the edge? We still have that portion of County One that goes all the way to twenty-six.
Correct.
Now, we don't have that in any plan right now, but.
Correct.
My point being is, is that project going to cover all costs to our satisfaction for a tie into the old road and the new road? Is there anything that we need to be looking at there?
I think the section that would be on phase four of the Dyke Project will be adequate.
Okay.
Uh, what, what I did always plan, and we've got some, the design numbers put in there, I kind of thought it would be a nice time to do a joint project on maybe Wall Street. You know, Wall Street's starting to see a lot of, a lot of heavy traffic, there's over five thousand cars a day on there.
Huge.
Uh, we would really like to do a mill and overlay at the same time because we have Batumis paving in that project. We'd probably see a pretty decent, uh, number and by adding a mill and overlay on our, on our Wall Street would help. Um, there's another project that's been, I don't know if I'd say competing, but it's been real, a lot of vocal comments on it. It's out of County Road six in the very southeast part of the county. So right now, that's what we're doing internally, is trying to figure out, and I think it's something that we might talk about next week at Highway Tracking Committee. Uh, you know, we did have some underruns on our County Road eighteen project this year. Uh, so we need to figure out exactly how much underrun we did have so we can see where our state aid balances. But, uh, there's probably, we feel there's enough money to do one, either one of those two projects. So it's, uh, it's kind of a.
Is, is the tracking meeting scheduled for the fourth?
I think it is the fourth, yeah.
We didn't have that going.
Is it fourth or fourth?
Yeah, fourth at, after the board meeting is when I have it.
Yeah, I saw it was fourth.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the construction side of the budget? The third page is Highway Administration and that pretty much covers office-type expenditures as well as, uh, Nathan and myself and the front office staff salaries. Very little changed on that one. Uh, the cell phone budget, I guess, went up a little bit, a thousand dollars. Uh, we did finally, uh, issue smartphones to our engineering technician staffs. I mean, that way, when they're out in the field, they've got access to their, their emails and they've also had access to, um, the web, which I think is going to be kind of handy for them, uh, as well as weather and stuff like that. When they're out on the road, it's kind of nice to have, uh, access to some of those things. So that went up by a thousand dollars. Very little else changed, I think, on that one there. The fourth page is Highway Shop. This is the only other one that has seen a major change, I guess. Been noticing some of our outlying shops, they're, they're starting to show their age a little more. Uh, we currently have always had around sixty-five to. We currently have always had around $65,000 to $70,000 for building, repair and maintenance. And I did bump this one up by $50,000. I think we need to do some more projects. We've been just kind of getting by with these shops. Some of them have overhead door issues. I know the one in Yulin, it's got some structural issue with it up there. The building itself is starting to tip in the windows instead of being square or now tilted a little bit. We did do some work on the apron part of the floor there. For many years, it had a big gap underneath the door, so in the wintertime, it was like. I did, yeah. Probably wasn't, I think this change kind of just went in effect real quick.
Yeah, it just went in yesterday.
Okay, so that's not on here?
Yeah, I've got it on mine.
Does it incorporate on that front page, numbers? It's not there either.
We just added that yesterday when we met with Dave.
This thing grows and grows by the.
I know, it's been going the wrong direction.
So the final number on that one requested was $120,000 instead of 70. Our fuel budget actually looked real good, so we kept that flat. That was at $420,000 for '15. We kept that at $420,000 for '16 with the hope that diesel fuel stays somewhat constant. I think our repair, our equipment repair and maintenance budget was at $215,000 last year or this year, I mean, and we did bump that up by $5,000. It looked like in 2014, we had exceeded a little bit, so we're trying to stay within our trends, I guess, for that. A lot of that has to do, I think, with, if we have a pretty tough winter, I think that's where we see our biggest costs. You're wearing out cutting edges on your equipment as well as your, things just break down when you're out fighting in the snow.
Did you say equipment repair?
Yeah.
Or is it you talking about the internal service?
Well, the, the building repair and maintenance, that one went up by 50.
Yes.
And then the equipment repair, the next one down, went up by five.
Okay.
And then the internal service one, in an effort to try to keep on track there, that one went up, I think it was, was it 50,000?
Fifty.
That's as a result of some of the, adjusting for some of the new purchases for the new replacements?
Well, we've been behind and so we've been trying to just increase it 50,000 a year just to catch up to where we're supposed to be. So we've been lagging behind for a number of years.
And I guess that's, that's kind of the fourth page. The fifth page is unallocated and that one is there just kind of shows some of our gravel tax revenues and the, it shows the wheelage tax. We've got that split into two. We've got the city, the small city wheelage tax share as well as the county wheelage tax share. So that number actually went up a little bit from what our projections were, which was kind of nice. I think the smallest increment was estimated at 5,000 and ended up being 5,466 or something. So some of the cities got some additional money there. And I don't know if the rest of you have seen, but I got an email from the state a couple of weeks ago showing there being, was it 10 and a half or 12 and a half million dollars? It's going to be shared to all the cities in the state of Minnesota. So I think like even, like Comstock is going to get $7,500. Dilworth is going to get $47,000 from the general fund. So that's a nice little bump for the cities that they'll be able to utilize. Between that and our wheelage tax, I mean, Comstock's going to get over $12,000 that they can put into their roadways, whether it be gravel on their side streets or culverts or, or maybe a cost share. And Glendon, Glendon's going to take their money that they get from the county as well as probably this money and utilize that as their cost share when we do our project on Park Avenue. So I know that's going to help them out. That it, Dave? I guess that's it.
I just have a quick question. Do you know projected when 52 will be open?
Well, we're still kind of, there's some grinding they have to do. There are some bumps that were unacceptable or, you know, what they do after we pave these roads, they run a profile graph along there and then it measures how many bumps in a mile, bumps just being changes from up and down. And there's a certain threshold they have to meet and so under the thorough tracks is probably the worst. There was a couple of manholes under there and they just didn't go through there very good. There's lots of movement there, so my best guess is within a week or so. I know a lot of people are pretty excited.
Yeah.
Some county staff have even talked to me and one individually drives 18 as well and he's very happy. I think 18 turned out real well, looks real nice.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve, well, next item on our agenda is approval of the West Central Regional Juvenile Center's 2016 bed purchasing contract. Good morning.
Good morning. As I mentioned, I'm here today to look for Clay County's continued support in purchasing beds. Historically, we've been purchasing about seven beds per day and that would be the request again for 2016. Based on our budget that we have proposed, we're not looking at any increase in the cost per bed for our counties next year. So we would be looking for a commitment from Clay County at $79,500 a bed for a total investment of $556,500 for that, for the entire year.
Questions, Kevin?
Well, not a question, but a comment. This is, this is part of the cooperative agreement that we have with all member counties is to have these annual purchase agreements approved by the county boards this time of year. So even though this is, this is a budget item for 2016, we've asked all counties to approve them now. So this, we ask for a resolution today on this and we're basically committing to no change in our cost for 2016's budget.
Mr. Chair, I move the annual purchase agreement as presented by Steve.
I'll second it.
And we have a motion in a second, further discussion, Jenny?
I have a question. I see that this is kind of, you come up with that number based on the past four years usage, but from what I'm hearing and what I've observed is that we're using a lot more every year. And so my concern is, are we purchasing enough?
I think at some point, there certainly would be some benefits to Clay County in purchasing additional bed space. We've had different years in the past where we're, we've not utilized the seven beds that we purchased. This year we are over seven. But I certainly think that would be something that it would benefit, there'd be benefits to Clay County to look at purchasing, especially as our, as our, you know, currently our budget's based on 26.25 beds being purchased next year. And so again, there would be potentially some benefits in purchasing.
So we're today talking about purchasing seven beds, but currently you're over seven beds, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I chair that committee and you're correct in what's, what the current trend is. Clay County is averaging closer to 7.5 beds. One thing in this process that you have to remember is for a number of years, Clay County didn't come close to using the number of beds that we did purchase. What this plan does is it sets and it covers the revenue for the projected budget for 2016. And it, I think it more evenly puts all counties in their appropriate place. You know, you could also look at it, Jenny, that in the past years, Clay County has really subsidized the other counties in this process. And so for this one year, I don't see any problem with the, now Cass County, you know, they are, they were a new member in 2015, but they obviously, in their first year, they're seeing their, their growth. So they've asked for 2.5 bed increase. So of the, of the member counties, I think there were four of us that were actually over.
Seven, seven of our 11 counties are currently, are currently over their, their bed purchasing amount for this year.
But some of them we're talking about, real minor.
But that's not the way it's been tracking over the last several years.
Yeah.
So it's something we'll have to watch. I, you know, I, I think the concern is that, you know, our arrangement with the other counties is, is that you're guaranteed the number of beds that you purchase.
Right.
No more, no less. If there's additional space, there's no additional charge. But as everybody seems to be continuing, we'll have to monitor that because we don't want to find ourselves where Clay County has to send, you know, a juvenile somewhere else because we don't have room in the end, so.
And that's my concern because it is in Clay County.
Right.
And so I, if we have it in county, I don't want to be sending
Right.
out exactly like our jail situation. I don't want to be sending.
No.
Right. Yes, yeah, we are and we will next year. We'll be our, we'll be the second largest user in our own facility. So Cass County will have surpassed us in the number of beds that they've purchased.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
Both say a same motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Brian, you want to give us your update? And then we'll take a little break.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess after the board meeting last Tuesday, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wayland and myself met to talk about some of the funding mechanism and working with Shisago on the great, the jail bonding bill and talked about some strategies there. Really haven't had any decisions with that to bring to the board. We've had further discussion on it. Excuse me. Mental health subcommittee, we, that's already been reported very well on by the two commissioners. Lori and I met with information services on budget review. I attended that solid waste advisory meeting out at Highway. We talked about renting space with the highway shop. I thought it went really well as well and share Commissioner Mojo's optimism on that. Lori and I met with the sheriff on, and the jail and disaster emergency services on their budget. We also met with technology services on their budget, the recorder on their budget. I attended the solid waste advisory meeting for part of the meeting. We met with Georgia and Joe in regards to the family service center building budget and the maintenance budget. Tim Magnusson and I met with a family in regards to a home buyout. We met on the, with Nancy on the assessors budget. On Friday, I attended a technical training day in St. Cloud. It was sponsored by the Minnesota Association of County Administrators. Yesterday, we met with Dave and his budget. And yesterday afternoon, we had a jail design committee. And I don't know if it was talked about. I think Commissioner Campbell mentioned that the 11th, that the architects would be coming with a recommendation from the committee to discuss the different options and seek approval and pushing forward with the design.
That's about it, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
That consulting issue on the jail with Shisago, I think we should get that resolved fairly quick if, if you can have some discussions with their administrator and see where we should recommend going with that and probably the sooner the better.
Probably bring it next week or something, yeah? Okay.
Okay, let's take a break for a few minutes and. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to our public health administrator. Come on up. And don't be bashful ladies.
Good morning. Is this one just for me? We'll start with our, our agenda item requesting a step adjustment for the project manager for the Cass-Clay Rethink Mental Health Initiative. And we did get the information in regards to the Bush grant that we received that goes from, actually started June of this year. So we're already almost two months into it and then it goes through June of 2017. So we've interviewed some candidates. There's really a high level need for this candidate because, first of all, they're working in both Cass and Clay Counties with the Mental Health Initiative group. And that group started after our community assessment and the needs were shown that there's some work in this initiative that needs to be done. So it's been ongoing for about three years, that initiative, or two. And so Gina's kind of been facilitating that group. And so we are now hiring because of this grant that we received. We want to hire a project manager to kind of push this initiative forward. And the funding is going to cover all the costs for this position. There will be not any county dollars involved. So because of the candidate that we have, that's, that's done about 12 years in a leadership role in one of our organizations in Cass County as well as seven years in an initiative in the Cass-Clay community. He has a lot of years of experience in regards to the level of managerial and facilitation needs that we need for this group. So we are asking for a consideration of a step six on a grade 18, which is, grade 18 is, most of our project managers are on that grade, so the grade is the same. But step six is based on his experience that he brings to the table.
So the position was advertised for a grade 18, step one?
Well, we always grad, we always advertise one to three and that's in the realm of the department heads.
Any other questions?
Would this person not accept the position if we went with grade step one or?
Probably very unlikely because of the level of experience he has. He's coming with a great deal of experience, multiple years of experience. And if you think about this group and, and the needs in the community for, for both Cass and Clay, there's a large number of people in this initiative that are, that have been working on this for two years, but we really need to ramp it up and move forward. So it has to be someone that comes in with a great level of experience to kind of move forward. We, we don't really have the luxury of kind of the orientation process that you would with a new employee with no experience. There just isn't that timeline. The timeframe is short for the grant, so.
My other question is, this grant period is from June 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2017. If you don't hire someone until August 1st, does that push it back? August 1st, 2015 to August?
No, no. We just have those, you know, they're all, you know, that's the savings we would have. So in order to offer the candidate grade or step six, we have money in that budget for that.
Any other questions? Darren, are there any HR issues with this? No?
Mr. Chairman, I want to follow up on Commissioner Gross's question. I know typically we've had to really bump up the steps for nurses in your department and that's been because of demand, not necessarily experience, but demand.
Right.
And, you know, we probably have a lot of our employees who are more qualified than, than what they're getting paid for.
Sure. Sure.
You know, so I, I just, you know, I've always in the past have supported it because of the demand that if we don't do it, we simply aren't going to get anybody. Now, tell me about that in this case. Is this, you know, is there, is this a demand issue or just an experience issue?
Well, both. I mean, we had a large pool of applicants that really didn't meet the qualifications in, in this level of a position. There are more entry-level candidates that we received. There was a very limited number, if any, that had the level of experience that we were looking for specifically for, for this initiative. And Gina can maybe touch a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I think the other problem that we have, of course, is grant-funded positions and it's very hard to find the qualified people that are willing to take the risk of a, of a two-year initiative. This candidate has, is very skilled and he, he, I talked to him about the salary and he said, he was a little bit hesitant. He said he's interested in a career change, but I think that this would help bring him over and we need to, with this job, we need to work fast and deep and hard. And so the, the applicants we had, there were some great entry, I'd love to hire some of them at entry level, but they wouldn't have the leadership skills that it'd take to pull this off.
I guess my, excuse me. I guess my first thought was, are we just trying to fill out this grant? We got the money, you know, are we going to use up the money?
No, we got this grant because we need that person to really move us forward. There's been a planning group of five, full-time jobs, trying to figure this out and, and over 70, some community agencies involved, but this kind of work takes somebody who's dedicated to do this, do this initiative. So I would be supervising that position.
Like I said, I have a, sometimes I have a little bit of a question. Someone leaving their job for a two-year job, you know, for a career change, you know?
And I've talked to this person and I understand where this person's coming from and I have confidence that this person could really do the job.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye. All in favor, signify or say nay. Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Not the commissioners.
Oh, okay. So we'll hand out, we did a more simplified version of the.
Is this for Lori?
Oh, that's for me.
Okay. So we're handing out a packet that maybe will give more of a summary to understand their budget. I know it always is fairly detailed and complicated. So the first page you have gives the summary of the revenue in the first column under all of our program areas and then the expenses and then the net difference that we will see in those areas. And I can go into some description of those. There's not really any marked changes in any of these areas. Administrative cost covers our infrastructure. And then we're looking at the area of immunization services, flu and disease prevention and control. No real big changes in that area. The disaster preparedness and response, our public health emergency preparedness grant. And we have a city readiness grant. So those are grant funds that we receive. The EMS system is, that will be where the Barnesville ambulance falls in line, as well as some of our work with CPR training. And then in the food pool and lodging, that 460, that's pretty self-sufficient. The only time we are requesting additional funds is if there would be an outbreak. And that's really unpredictable and hopefully doesn't happen. But we need to have some funds in case there is a particular outbreak. And the rest of the area in 470 is multiple programs, including the clinic, our home visiting programs, family home visiting, our Nurse Family Partnership and Healthy Families America. And I can talk a little bit more about those. The WIC is self-sufficient, our school nursing. And then many of our health promotion area, our statewide health improvement grant, the Clearway Community Wellness Grant, this Bush Grant that we just talked about with the Mental Health Initiative. And then there's a little bit of health education time in that area. And then the next section is our Child and Teen Checkup Outreach, which is a grant-funded position. We also do screenings, child and teen checkup screenings. We have a refugee health grant. And then Detox is in that 490 area, as well as from 6,400 and down to the very last one, 6,455 is much of our adult health case management services. So, I mean, it's a quick summary, but we'll look at the next page as well so you can see the grand total at the bottom for all of those programs. And then the difference, the change percentage on the side. Now, does anyone have questions before I move on to the next page? I know that was a quick summary, but any questions for that? Or we can come back to that as well. The second page will give you kind of the trends. So it shows the revenue from 2011 budget through this 2016 budget and then the percentage of change. So you can see in the revenue side, you know, we continually are searching for grants and writing grants to increase our revenue. So that has been an increase. Our contracts have been increased, license and professional services, and the insurance, Medicare and MA billing that we receive. We bill for every service that we can. And someone from Lori's department does all of our billing for all of our third-party reimbursement. We still have some self-pay that we receive for those that are non-billable services. Occasionally a little miscellaneous revenue. And then also the Barnesville ambulance. There's no revenue source in public health. That's the county dollar expense. So we have the Barnesville ambulance on the expense side below.
Mr. Chair. Kathy, could you define self-pay? People who you do a service for, do you expect to be paid from them?
You know, sometimes like a detox client, it might be a self-pay because they have insurance. Yeah, most of the time, we don't receive those. Sometimes there's some clinic services.
Understood.
Okay. And then on the expense side, we've categorized it as, you see the salary expense, our travel expense. These are some of the larger categories. The salary expense, we have some positions that we'll talk about in a little bit. Traveling-related expenses is pretty much the same for all of the staff that are traveling, out-home visits, et cetera. Rent, liability and workers' comp. The rent, of course, is going up and our liability insurance went up a little bit. Our contractual expenses for the medical consultant, our PH doc insurance, or PH doc computer system, those are examples of that. We have an equipment line item, which is just a little bit up from last year. Telephone postage, that goes up with additional staff. The vaccine costs, we order private pay vaccine that we receive and we bill to people that receive that. And then there's nothing to welcome county.
Chair, can I go back to the line item? The telephone postage supplies miscellaneous?
Yes.
I'm a little, just 66% increase is huge. Can you define maybe more what is entailed in that?
Yeah, Mary, can you describe more what is entailed in that? There's some additional expenses because of the additional.
Most of this relates to the grants, the ship, Clearway, the Community Wellness Grant. A lot of the activities that we do are classified under the supply category. And so then there just happens to be just an increase because of the increased cost in those grants. So it's covered by grant money.
And then maybe another question is, why wouldn't there be a line item for the grant instead of bundled in the, does that make sense? Bundled in the telephone postage? It just seems like, oh, raw bundling.
Yeah. And in the detailed budget, it is all in there in the grants. This is just kind of the overview summary. So it's just categorizing in less areas. But our detailed grant really shows all of those contracts that we have and those grants that we have. So that will give you a little more detail in there.
So what Commissioner Mojo was asking about is the federal, state and other grants on the revenue side that being up 45.42%, is kind of where part of that is coming from?
Right. You know, we write a lot of mini-grants and provide a lot of funding to different organizations in the four county area. And that's where all of these expenses fall into place.
I'm working under about five or six grants that we have an "other" section that we describe it. And I think this is where the "other" goes. So it's all kinds of things from strategic events to funding to our partners. So it gets crazy.
Does that answer your question? Yeah, I'll find it on that. Okay.
More detail. It's the most biggest detail you would have is this. I have the backup for that.
Thank you. And then, of course, the Barnesville ambulance that makes the request every year for the expense. So, you know, the bottom line is, there's been a decrease last year for the 2015 budget from what we received in 2014. And then in 2016, we have an increase of 48,700 increase in that county request.
Well, Barnesville, why is that handled differently like in Holly Hills? Why is that a different item? I mean, does Barnesville have their own ambulance?
Correct. Right. And the.
And there is some contract to Fargo-Moorhead or?
And Barnesville has, they work with many counties. And so they usually receive funding through all the counties to help with that service. If the counties didn't assist with that Barnesville ambulance, they wouldn't be able to service our area.
Okay.
So, and we still utilize the ambulance service in the Fargo-Moorhead area as well. But Barnesville can service outlying counties. And that's been ongoing for a lot of years. It used to come out of the public health funding, but then that ended. So now the counties pay through the county tax dollars. Is there questions on that summary page for the revenue and expenses? Any other additional questions? Okay. And then the third graph is just a snapshot of showing our revenue services sources for 2015 and 2016. So you can see a large portion is. Did you get that? Oh, did you get that? Sorry. I could pass it around and just showing the, it's a snapshot.
Why don't you keep this one while you go over it? Give it back to you.
Sorry about that. I guess we must have missed that when we were compiling our pages. It shows that the grants increased, of course, as we try to always access additional dollars. So that went from 36% last year to 44% this year. And the rest of it is insurance payments, contracts, licenses, self-pay and tax dollars. So there's not a lot of change in any of those areas. But the grant portion really has increased. Do you want to pass that around? Do you have the next graph that we have is a family home visiting program? So that's just a snapshot. Did everybody receive that one?
Yes.
It just shows, that's one of our larger areas. We have the Nurse Family Partnership Program and Healthy Families America, two evidence-based programs the state recognizes. And eventually those are the only two that they will fund as far as home visiting programs. And we just started our Healthy Families America program. We've had the Nurse Family Partnership Program. As maybe some of you recall, we were the first in Minnesota to have that program back in 2000. So this just is a snapshot of the number of hours that the nurses are putting in, numbers of families and numbers of clients over a three-year period. So 2013, 2014 and 2015. Then it really hasn't, there hasn't been a whole lot of change in the number of families that we visit. But with our Nurse Family Partnership, that is first-time mothers only for that program. The Healthy Families America, we can take any of the other clients, second, third, fourth time families. So at least we're covering a gamut of all the needs, high-risk families, high needs in those program areas. And those are billable services. So we bill what we can for those ones that have coverage. And then the other dollars are from our local public health grant dollar and then some county tax dollars. The Care Coordination Program, that is with all of our adult health programs, our M-Show, our Min Choices, some of those areas that you recall we extended before about. And that just shows numbers of hours and numbers of clients. This area is really growing as we see more clients and more changes. That is now, the funding is through a time study instead of funding through individual clients. So so far, the funding has worked well for us as far as covering all those costs. Then we have an immunization and flu graph. And that shows the difference in some of the number of clients and vaccines that we give. Of course, you all know about the flu vaccine that we still continue to provide as well as many other facilities in the community. We have funding to cover the adult uninsured and underinsured. We can provide the shingles shot, the hepatitis A, hepatitis B, tetanus, measles, mumps, rubella and chicken pox. And those are for adults that have no insurance or are underinsured. And then we also have some private pay stock vaccine that we can provide to adults that have insurance. And then all of the children immunizations, we provide all of those for clients. And those, again, that don't have insurance, we have some free vaccine from the state for children's vaccine.
Mr. Chair. When the flu vaccine comes in from the government, does Pike County have to pay for that or is that furnished by the federal government?
No, we pay for that.
We have to purchase the vaccine?
Correct.
Be it shingles or flu or whatever?
Well, the ones that I mentioned for the underinsured and uninsured, those are provided to us. Those vaccines are provided.
Thank you.
Any questions about that area? Okay. Detox. We have the annual statistics, as you can see, and the trends from 2009 to 2015. So you can see at the top, the number of client admissions. And we have a gradual increase. 2015, of course, is just through June. So we have the billable days listed. So we anticipate that will be much higher at the end of the year. A number of clients that aren't accepted so far has been 18. Then we have the male versus female, and the majority are always male clients. The age groups are listed there, with the majority being the 45 to 59. And then the state of residence. So we have the Minnesota referrals, those in Clay County. The Southeast Human Service Center, we have a contract with that started in 2013. And they pay for those clients that are coming over from the North Dakota side. And then we also have the VA contract that just started March of this year. So the numbers aren't like Southeast, but we anticipate those will be higher. Our homeless population, as you can see, you know, that gets to be a fair number of clients that we serve. And then we have jail hold. So those that are needing detoxification services before they go back to the jail. So we serve those as well. So our average census is rising, of course, partly because of the North Dakota clients that we're serving. So you can see the average census now in 2015, just for the six-month period, has risen up to 7.4 for our average daily census. So that's been an increase from the 5.6 and the 5.3. So we're seeing the numbers rise. And there, the next one is really, again, showing client admissions, the billable days, and then the numbers from Southeast. We've received over 400,000 from Southeast over a two-year period. So we've received a lot of clients and the revenue comes with that. In 2015, average has been about 52 a month. So we're seeing a lot of clients from Southeast. We anticipate we'll see more from the VA as time goes on. Any questions about the detox? We're still operating at a 10-bed, but of course, as we talked about previously, we're staffing up less variable hours and more regular staff in the event that we'll move to a 16-bed with the increased demand.
Where is that located?
The detox? It's in the Family Service Center building on Second Fork. And then the last piece I have is just kind of a summary of our budget. And maybe this will explain some of the savings that we have as well as other particular items. So under our administration, which is our infrastructure, as you can see, we are doing the financial work for the four counties. That is one of the pieces that we're doing for Otter Tail, Clay, Becker and Welkin. So we are receiving some revenue to offset the costs of doing that financial work. And that comes from the local public health grants. And then there's also an increase in that work to cover some of those expenses. Mary is doing some public health financial work for Otter Tail. So there's reimbursement for her expenses, providing that service to them. They don't have a public health financial person, so Mary's providing some of that. The detox is going to electronic health records as all of the health records, they all have to be electronic. So we need to move the detox records to electronic version. So they'll be paying for some of that. PH Doc is our documentation system, and there's a charge for that. So they'll be paying for some of those fees because of that need. And then, of course, our rent costs, because rent goes up. But we allocate rent costs to most of the grants that we receive. They'll cover some of that. So that really helps offset those rent costs. So those are some of the savings just in the administration area. Our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, he is doing some regional work for the four counties. And that will be offset by some of the funding that's received, that we'll be receiving for his services. So that will be helpful with Otter Tail, Welkin and Becker, funding some of that. Our food, beverage and lodging inspections, as you can see, we had carryover dollars from 2014. And we believe the licensing fees, we anticipate that to be self-sustaining in regards to those inspections. And again, we do Welkin as well for the food, beverage and lodging. Family Home Visiting, I talked about that a little bit, about the two evidence-based programs that the state recognizes. I have those listed, Nurse Family Partnership and the Healthy Families America. There's high costs and high training with those programs. There's high costs and high training with those programs. It fills a need for those families that are really at risk. And if we catch those early, those families early in the prenatal stage and families with babies, the long-term savings will be recognized as we deal with these families at the prevention end. So there's county tax dollars that go into these programs, as well as some of our grant funds. The WIC, that's based on clients served, and so that program is self-sufficient. We also received additional dollars for some of the mileage. And that was the benefit of becoming a four-county structure. So that's one of the savings we have seen with that four-county structure. Child and Teen Checkup Outreach, that's a grant-funded program, self-sustaining. Partnership for Health, you might have some questions on this. And that's where we have the, quite the large grants, that statewide health improvement grant, the legislature approved again funding for, for this year, although the funding was reduced. So we have that listed. Our Community Wellness Grant, that was a CDC grant that we received, four years of funding. The new Bush Grant is what we just talked about with the Mental Health Initiative. Clearway Grant is for tobacco prevention work, and that was renewed. And then there's, you know, we're always looking for additional funding in the area of health promotion. Now, I know, Mr. Campbell, maybe you had a question in regards to some of the differences with the Wellness Grant and the Ship Grant? Is that?
No, I think it's been answered.
It was answered, okay. Okay. Early hearing detection, there's funding depending on the kids that we receive for the early hearing detection program. Refugee Health, we have funding for that. But it's for really the first-time refugees, and we're seeing a lot of secondary refugees. And then the detox, I talked about it a little bit, we have the increased revenue from the VA in Southeast. Our census continues to increase. Our budget increased, again, we're moving variable hour staff to regular staff and anticipating a 16-bed unit. This, and a reminder, just the detox is out of the social services budget. And Care Coordination Programs, we increased the revenue and we anticipate that the revenue will cover those. And then the last page is really the open positions, which contributes to increase in our request. And that's one FTE for our case aid administrative support for just the increased demand with our care coordination programs. That will be one that we may need as the increased demand, as we see that this year and next year. And the Health Educator, we have an open .5 position still in our budget. Family Home Visiting, that's a new, will be a new request as we see the programs expand. We're not sure with Healthy Families America, what the expansion will be. So that's an open position, haven't made the request yet, will come as that is warranted. And then we have roster hours that we use for support staff. We also are using Experience Works program. So we have one currently, right now, that is assisting us with some support staff work. And the Experience Works program pays for that person, so really we're getting that free. And then detox is looking at an Experience Works person that can really focus on just doing the laundry. That gets to be a high demand because we do a lot of laundry down at detox, so that would be a focus. And again, we don't pay for that, Experience Works does for that, so that would be a savings for us. Questions?
I have one question. I noticed we are continuing to advertise for some detox positions that haven't been filled. So my question relates to these open positions for the 2016 budget. What, which of these positions are the ones that we are advertising currently? Are these all new positions?
Well, the detox position for the lead RN is not in here, that's currently. We have, we have availed ourselves to all of the advertising that is possible out there. We've done the in-form, we've done the paper copy, we've done the radio, we've done various mailbags. We haven't been able to recruit for that position, so.
Is it salary issue, petition issue?
I believe that there's, no, we're still seeing an RN shortage around this area. So I'm sure that that's one of the reasons. Detox is a pretty unique area. It might not be of large interest for any RNs. I'm not sure, salary is always an issue when we see, when we're advertising for other positions. Normally, they get through an interview process, and then when it comes to the salary, that's when we see the declines in accepted offers. So there could be a multitude of reasons, but we still don't have a person filling that position.
Mr. Chair, Cathy, it seems to me that an applicant for a job would know what the salary is before he or she would even come to an interview.
Yeah, the salary is usually posted when they request the salary.
Okay.
So, but oftentimes, they're coming from an organization that's paying for it. You know, some of the facilities in North Dakota, so the recruitment is a little bit tougher. Other questions?
Thank you.
Any other thing for these ladies? Thank you.
Thank you. Good thing it's the end of the meeting, right?
Okay, anything else? Brian, anything else?
Nothing further.
Nothing? Vicki, nothing? Laurie, nothing? All right.